Hello, hold on I need to recharge my speakerphone.
Okay.
Would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I get a chance to read the minutes?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Let me just do a roll call on everything since this is my phone.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Oh Rex?
Yes.
On the bills, I need to add on to those, because I have transfers that need done and... We got one in after last, I mean with last meeting, but he brought it in after I had made out the list. So I need to add on $6,475.25 for a total of $176,901.65.
What was that? For what bill?
For total bills.
What was the $6,000, what was the $1,000?
Okay, Chris brought his bill in after I already had these printed up last meeting. He brought it in about four o'clock, so I was gonna add it on as a bill. We have payroll transfers. We have a, when they sent the bill over on one of the housing bills, it was 1250 than what the first bill was. So, transfers to general would be $3,305.25. Housing, 1250. Water, 960. And sewer, 960.
Make a motion to approve the bills. Does everybody get a chance to go over them?
I thought we'd just pay him table, I didn't know what he was doing.
You have to pay bills within 30 days of receipt of them to stay within compliance with the law.
But the next meeting, it'd be 29 days, Rex will be here.
You've already got problems that some of these bills have been presented before the last meeting. So you won't have anything on your face. I mean mine, but... When were some of those bills on that front, Linda?
Pardon me?
What was the date on the bills, the first one?
Let's see. January 24th, February 9th, February 11th, January 21st, February 7th, January 19th, February 11th, February 15th, February 18th.
So you're gonna repass the 30 days on some of those.
So some of them would...
In order to stay in compliance with the local government prompt payment act.
Second.
Kunsman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Can I have letters of presentations?
We don't need the whole letters read, read to do it. They resigned, that's all we need to know, and the date, and we'll vote on it. We don't need to hear the letters.
As long as everybody's reviewed them, did you review them?
Yep.
They were effective, both of them, for Mr. Dona and Ms. Miller were effective February 18th.
Okay, the first one I have is, "To whom it may concern..." This is from Dennis Holstadter, and he's resigning from the Windsor Ambulance Board effective February 16th.
That's nothing to do with us.
That needs to go to the county man's.
Yes.
Well, technically it does so, because you've got to reappoint someone for that board.
We don't, they do.
No, the city.
That's the city council's position. They give it to the ambulance community, they don't give it to the professionals.
We don't need to read them letters. Just go down, right? You read them, I haven't, you read them, I didn't?
Yep, I read them.
I make a motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
Jim was turned in on the 18th of February, and so was Tricia. Kunsman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Okay, move on to appoint acting mayor Rex Kunsman.
If Rex accepts that now, when we have the next election, and he don't get mayor, can he go back to his council seat?
As long as he doesn't resign his council seat, yes. So what happens is, he only gets one vote then, in the meeting until the next special election. And he can't vote on it, he can't vote on a tie or...
Yeah.
Can't break the tie, I mean.
Does he get the extra pay if he resigns?
I'll have to look into that, I don't know that answer. I think they already, Linda, I forget, when do you guys pay the mayor and the council members?
They get paid every six months. So I would need to pay Jim and Tricia from November through February. And then the others will get paid in April.
I'll have that answer for the next meeting, I don't know that off the top of my head, I'm sorry. Do you need a motion?
Make a motion to vote on Rex Kunsman being the acting mayor.
Second.
Can Rex vote?
Rex, I assume he will abstain.
Kunsman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Yes.
Bridges? Okay, you have ordinance 2201, an ordinance concerning payment of city employee payroll and city bills to pass by the city council, city of Windsor, this blank day of February 22, with blank yays, blank nays, absent or not voting. Published in pamphlet form by authority of the city council, city of Windsor, Shelby County, Illinois, this blank day of February 2022. Whereas the acting mayor and the city council of the city of Windsor, in the city of Windsor County of Shelby, state of Illinois, did determine that in order to comply with the Illinois Wage Payment and Collection Act and the payment of city bills pursuant to the Local Government Prompt Payment Act of the city of Windsor, here and after, city needs to have in place an ordinance to ensure payment of city employees' payrolls and city bills. Whereas there may be times that the meeting must be canceled, or there is a lack of a quorum. Whereas, in order to stay compliant with federal and state law concerning paying employees and city bills, whereas the city has full-time employees that are paid on a weekly basis, whereas the city has paid part-time employees on at least a semi-monthly basis, whereas the city council only meets on a monthly basis. Whereas, in order to comply with both federal and state law on payment of employees and city bills, it is in the best interest of the city of Windsor to pass an ordinance concerning payment of said employees and all appropriate taxes and retirement payments, as well as city bills pursuant to the laws governing the same. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Windsor and the city council of the city of Windsor, Illinois, as follows. Section 1, Salary and Wages. The city council sets the rates of pay for employees at least annually at the city council meeting. The said rates of pay for full-time city employees are set to be paid weekly. The part-time employees are paid by the city for their hours at a semi-monthly basis. That overtime for said employees shall be paid by the city on a monthly basis. That if the city of Windsor has an emergency and cannot meet for a legitimate reason, or lacks a quorum, the city clerk shall pay payroll and appropriate payroll expenses such as taxes, and the city council may ratify said payment at the next monthly city council meeting. Section 2, Bills and Expenses. That the city of Windsor must comply with the Local Government Prompt Payment Act on payment of city bills and expenses, including but not limited to utilities, gas, intergovernmental bills submitted to the city for payment. That if the city of Windsor has an emergency and cannot meet for a legitimate reason, or lacks a quorum, the city clerk shall pay after the bill is signed off by the appropriate bill commissioner, and the city council may ratify said payment at the next monthly city council meeting. Section 3, Affecting Date. This ordinance shall be in force and effect immediately on and after its passage, approval and publication in pamphlet form as provided by law. Section 4, Printing Error. If there is an error in printing, the publishing requirement of this ordinance shall be accomplished by reprinting that portion of the ordinance which was in error within 30 days after passage is validated. Section 5, All Ordinances and Resolutions or parts thereof in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are, to the extent of the conflict, hereby repealed. Passed by a vote of the acting mayor and city council of the city of Windsor, Illinois, on this blank day of blank 2022, with blank yays, blank nays, and blank absent or not voting as follows. Dean Rex Kunsman, Randall Wallace, Danny Bridges, acting mayor, Linda Vors, city clerk, published in pamphlet form by city authority of the city council of the city of Windsor, Shelby County, Illinois, this blank day of blank 2022. City clerk.
Make a motion to vote on the ordinance?
Second.
Kunsman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Move on to the approval of two signatures for the check signing. Linda, who's on the list right now?
Right now is the mayor, and the treasurer, and the clerk sign checks. And when John was in the hospital, all we had to do was send a letter over to the bank, and they, it was okay for just two of us. So I have to fix a letter on this, so...
And then you'll have to change the bank account, so Rex is now the mayor.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to do all new signature cards.
I'll make a motion to vote on two signatures for the checking, check signing.
Second.
Okay, Kunsman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Okay, motor fuel, we don't have to do that tonight. I was audited today for 2021 for motor fuel. And the resolutions, she said wasn't correct, so Mr. Creaky will redo them and drop them back off, and they'll be ready for the next meeting.
And that's the engineer, right?
Yes, he's the I dot engineer.
So you need a motion to pass that until it's...
But we don't have him, so they'll be here for next meeting.
I'll make a motion to pass MFT.
We don't have them.
Yeah, we don't have them.
But it's on the agenda, so you should pass it till the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, do we need to roll call on that?
Yes.
Kunsman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
I don't think we have anything for executive session. Down to the recognition of the visitors.
Cindy Smith? John Kraft?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions. Do you have a policy on remote attendance to...
There's a state statute that allows it.
State statute allows it according to the policy of the local public body. And I'm guessing you don't have a policy, or maybe you said yes.
The state statute is what we're...
The state statute requires a quorum of the members of the public body to be in attendance.
And we have a quorum.
Not in attendance at the meeting. What changed between your opinion last time and this time?
The fact that the resignation letters were actually received and dated the 18th, now the quorum changes because of those resignation letters. Because you only have three members of the board at this point.
No, you have three members currently held in office.
Correct.
The board is still five members.
We have a quorum.
Okay, that's what we gotta stick with, and we'll see. That's all I have, I really wish you would... Now that you have a different mayor, try to find a different attorney.
Mark Crowe?
Nothing.
Sandra Crowe? No, Sandra Dona?
Oh yes. I can understand them not wanting to read this letter from my husband.
I'm not gonna settle to that, I can take it right now.
As of today, February 18th, I'm officially resigning as your mayor. For the past nine months, I've tried to serve to the best of my ability as your mayor. I want to thank my constituents who voted for me and put their trust in me. I'm not resigning because of the watchdogs or Alvy McQueen. Rather, if this had been my criteria, I would have stayed on, because I do not approve of harassment or the tactics of these kinds of groups or individuals who bully elected officials, who do not do as they say. I have done nothing purposely wrong. Rather, I have followed the precedent set by previous mayors, and followed advice given to me by the city attorneys who have served in past administrations. The things they instituted were never questioned, such as mayor voting. It has been, become impossible for me to be your mayor, because number one, the councilman refused to work with me. I asked for a meeting to discuss a staff member, and he refused to meet, and even listened to my suggestion. Two, the street commissar instructed his employee to not mow the cemetery, which had been done by Dean Hyde for the past 10 years, knowing it would create a problem. Rather than working for the good of our community and the cemetery, he sabotaged the cemetery workers. My entire family spent hours working out there because of his actions. I'm very proud of all the business in our town, I support them. I appreciate all the tax revenue they are bringing in. However, the councilmen go to great lengths to prevent owners from making necessary improvements, which go totally against what I and the councilwoman believe and want for this community. I cannot stand by and watch this when I go by on Friday and Saturday and see all the people our establishments are bringing in, but rather they vote no for the improvements or table the vote, giving no reason. Four, the superintendent of Windsor Schools contacted us about establishing a shelter for the children at the trailer park. But once again, some members of our council verbally objected to putting the city on city-owned boulevard, a shelter. I reached out to a farmer to see if the school could build one on his ground. This was a needed project. And five, I reached out to a city employee who screamed at me after I'd asked him to be respectful because of several complaints by our citizens. Six, there is simply no communication to me regarding things as a mayor, that a mayor needs to know. Therefore not allowing me to do my job. Number seven, at the last board meeting, it was almost impossible to conduct business because of people talking during the meeting, even people who do not live in Windsor. Finally, the disgraceful way our city clerk was talked to was abhorrent, and it should never be tolerated by anyone serving in any capacity in Windsor. This disgraceful, disgraceful and shameful behavior is never acceptable at any public meeting. And in my personal opinion, he should resign because of his bullying of a female city clerk who has served our community for 40 years. I ask that my family be allowed to heal. We have gone through cyberbullying, verbal obscenities, screaming at us in a meeting, half-truths, false accusations, disruptive meeting, all which have taken a toll on our entire family. I had a well-respected Windsor citizen tell me, "Jim, you have been a minister, a school bus driver, an EMT for the past 40 years in your community. People know who you are, and they know what you stand for, and that is what is good and right." Probably that is what hurts worse, to see kids of parents I knew, and I worked with, and I drove on the bus, treat us with disrespect, because I know they were not raised to act like this. I wanted to make a difference, but as you can see, my hands were tied in helping our community, which is for me an impossible situation. Thank you again to those who prayed for me and supported me, and my family will be forever grateful. And, and the comment to Alvy, Alvy had a timer, an egg timer, and he did kick somebody out of a meeting, Charles Hurst.
Alva McQueen? Ducky Johnson?
No, I don't wanna talk, but she got to speak longer than three minutes.
Yeah, why didn't she get off?
How come she wasn't shut off?
I was calling your name, you wasn't in here.
How come she wasn't shut off in three minutes?
Everybody else was shut off.
She was.
No, she wasn't. It's on page, isn't it?
I did, she didn't count.
Ducky Johnson?
Let's move on, Linda.
I want to address Deb Riley. Deb, can you hear me? Okay, I've known you for a long, long time. I've always considered you a friend. I never had any reason to doubt you. I've supported human elections, but there's some things I want you to clarify for me. And as a co-ordinator of the ambulance, I think I have a right to know. I believe it was at a December meeting that Josh asked you for documentation concerning Sonny. And you was to have, wanted two weeks to get that, and we was in the understanding that he would be able to start running calls as of January the 15th. As of Jan, at the January meeting, you told me he wasn't on insurance. And you said you had been trying to call the 800 number for the insurance numerous times, and got no answer. My question is, why didn't you call the business number?
I called the municipal insurance and left a message and didn't get a return call. When I finally got Linda's number, the number from Linda for the extension, that's it. I left still three more messages, but they finally did call me back. So I never promised I would get a letter from the insurance.
So my question is, why were you trying to contact the insurance?
To verify what their stance on Sonny with the potential alleged HIPAA violation was.
I can't hear you, Deb, what was your answer, why was you trying to contact the insurance?
To determine insurability of Mr. Rex.
On Sonny?
Yes.
Okay, I called the 800 number, and I got right through. That lady didn't have any idea what I was talking about, and said I had to contact Linda, the city clerk.
And I did talk to you, then, I believe her name was Sarah, the insurance company. And she indicated that Sonny would be insured, but we would have liability issues if there was another HIPAA complaint, because once you have one violation, then it becomes a problem with defense. And I believe Linda's trying to get a copy of that in letter form from our agent.
Ducky, can I ask a question?
What?
Did you ever find out if there was an investigation or not?
There was not. At the last ambulance board meeting, we were told by Linda that anybody that was on the payroll was on the insurance. So I wanna know if this was just another delay to keep Sonny off, or why... Somebody's not telling the truth here, and I wanna know why. Another thing...
I didn't know if the insurance would cover him or not, is the reality, so... And so your three minutes is up now.
Okay, let me ask you another thing.
Xavier?
You let somebody else go past three minutes, you can't let her be there in three minutes?
This is how they do it.
You have to apply the rules evenly across the board. If you let the other person go two minutes past three minutes, everybody else gets extra time, and nobody on the board told you your past three minutes. And nobody on the board has told you your past three minutes. So I'm gonna continue answering my questions if I'm...
That's it.
She's not a board member. One of these two people, the only people with the power to tell you not to talk is one of these two guys sitting right here.
I wanna hear the rest of what you got to say.
I wanna ask Deb if she knew about the meeting between Sonny and Tricia, Mike Anderson, myself, and possibly Albert Schaefer. Were you aware of that meeting?
Nope.
Where Sonny was given an ultimatum?
Nope, I know nothing about it.
Well, I was told that they were acting on what you recommended, that you knew all about this.
I know nothing about a meeting.
I know nothing about it, maybe.
Sonny was given an ultimatum, he'd call off the watchdogs, he'd stop all the social media, and he would be put back on to run calls.
I have no idea.
That was his ultimatum, and you knew nothing about that?
I have no knowledge of that meeting.
Okay. So somebody isn't telling me the truth. I want to tell you people, I took this job on to help this community, a community I don't even live in, and I'm not doing this just to be lied to. Somebody's not telling the truth, and I think I'm beginning to figure out who it is. Thank you. That's all.
My other few questions is, one, Deb, you didn't say anything. Any other time anybody's talking to them, they go past their three minutes. You were adamant about cutting them off in the middle of what they're saying, saying, hey, your three minutes is up. You have done a cut them off. Also, why can't you make eye contact with people while you're explaining? She had to get up and walk up there because all you could do is third goal. Please have confidence to look at someone while you're talking to them.
Are you making a motion?
You got it, thank you.
That was, that was really immature, thank you, I ain't done, thank you, Randy, appreciate it.
Sonny?
Do we have to sign in the signing sheet to talk in public by comment?
I want to hear what you got to say.
Well, it's up to the two board members here.
Go ahead, Sonny, I want to hear what you got to say.
I just want to understand ordinance twenty-two, twenty-two oh one, did you pass an ordinance that will allow you guys to pay any and all bills without ever meeting?
It has to be ratified at the next meeting.
I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to the board members, thank you, Deb. Is that what you guys passed?
That's what it looks like.
Well, the state statute that your city attorney might want to apprise herself of states that only bona fide emergencies allow for cancellations. False pretenses about a potential COVID situation is not a reason to cancel a meeting. Because one member's not going to be here is not a reason to cancel a meeting. In the entire tenure of your time on this board, you've had one situation in which you were not allowed to pay the bills, and that was at the last meeting. And now we've, we're working on adopting a policy that's going to just give carte blanche to whatever we want to pay and never ever, potentially never meet again.
What we were going on is this. Danny contacted the Attorney General, they told him to go with your city attorney. Contacted the state's attorney in Shelbyville, she said the same thing. I'm going by the advice of our town attorney, which it seems like that's what everybody wants us to go by. She told me, she contacted Brad Cole, was it, from the IML? He said we could have the meeting.
If you guys can pay, if you pass this ordinance, you're going to pass an ordinance that says you never have to meet again, ever.
It's not what it says.
Well, it will, that's exactly what will happen. I beg you to amend that, do not pass that and require continued meet. In fact, if you look up state statute, meeting once a month is not...
We are going to start going to twice a month if I have my way.
Correct. State statute requires municipality twice a month.
I didn't know that till a while back, they were going back to twice a month.
I would appreciate that, thank you for allowing us to speak.
I've got no problem with going twice a month.
I've got a real quick one. Why, why is the third person that's on the phone not here, is he on vacation?
That's what I was told.
Family situation in another state.
Can he answer it, or is he gone?
Lastly, he was on vacation, now his family situation, because that's what the statute requires. Gotcha.
Is he still on the phone, or is he gone? Can he answer where he's at and why?
I don't know, he can hear you on the cell phone.
Ask if he's on vacation.
Rex, do you have a family situation that you're out of town on right now?
That wasn't the question?
Yes.
Thank you, Randy, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
Wallace?
Yes.
Kuntzmann?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.